We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, June 19th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let us stand together as our attorney, Mr. Grady, will lead us in prayer. I ask you to please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
Most gracious and everlasting God, we thank you for this, another glorious day that you have allowed us to see, and we honor you for your undying fealty towards us. Lord, help us to continually hold up the light of your love, and may we be always mindful of our collective duty to serve each other as you serve you. Teach us your ways and lead us in a clean path. Shine your light upon the road that our commissioners must travel. Give them grace and truth to guide their every decision. Unite them under the banner of your love and allow them to speak with one clarion voice at which you will have them say. Teach us all to lean on your everlasting arms and give us the grace to lead according to your everlasting word. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We welcome each of you here this morning to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is also your meeting, and to those who may be viewing online, we welcome you also. For those in attendance today, I would ask you if you would please make sure that our phones are on silent so they wouldn't disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packets. Are there any agenda items you desire to pull or to add to today's agenda? Here, none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. First item of business we have before us is the fiscal year 2023-24 budget ordinance adoption. Mr. Jack White and Ms. Craig Warren, good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. As always, I'm very excited to be here with you this morning, particularly today. It's the culmination of six months' worth of work. The document before you is what's referred to as the budget ordinance for fiscal year 23-24. I'm going to walk you through it to the key points of this document. And as I noted, when I presented the budget to you, this is the largest piece of policy that the board will implement every year. This is a policy. It's how we'll spend the county's resources over the next year. If you turn to page two, and I don't know if Steve, there we go. Steve's got it up on the screen here. As we've gone through the budget, we're very familiar now with what the general fund is, and we've covered significantly the revenues, mainly property taxes, sales tax, motor vehicle taxes, all those things that make up the revenues of the county, which are $142,557,902. That's Section A. If you look at Section B, this is the spending plan that the board has worked on through the work sessions that we've had thus far. If we go on to page number three, you will see that the spending expenditures for next year are $142,557,902, and it's required by state law. It is balanced. This is a balanced county budget. Section two, beginning on page three, covers all of the funds as we roll through that are separate from the general fund. There are the seized asset fund at the sheriff's office, a variety of different fire department, fire district tax funds. I'm on page six now. Going to page seven. We're running through fire departments, still on those. Steve, you'll just go slowly as we go through. On page nine, we have the emergency telephone system fund, which is a separate account for our 911 system. Page 10, oxy tax trust fund. As you're aware, the county does collect oxy tax and does manage that budget. Mr. Warren's their finance officer, and they are included in our budget, even though they have their own authority. At the bottom, page 10 is the representative payee fund. We're going to talk about that a little bit today, but these are the assets our social services department manages for clients that are under guardianship, under our care. Page 11, new this year, opioid settlement fund. That is the amount of money that is being budgeted from those. School debt service fund, that's mainly your lottery and your restricted sales tax, which we'll also talk about today. Mr. Warren will with you. My favorite account on page 12, our capital reserve fund. This is how we do most of the county work without having to borrow money or raise taxes. We're able to save and put it in this fund. Our school capital fund, this year, the schools have asked for four projects that are over $100,000. I'm going to outline those. They are treated separately under Section B. It's New Bern High School, new boiler in the back of the building, $200,000. Avalock High School resurfacing the track, $220,000. Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary canopy over the walkway, $120,000, and West Craven High School resurfacing their track at $250,000. Page 13, we have our water fund. It is an enterprise account. It is in very good financial shape, and this is the budget that the board has adopted or will adopt for this division. Our Northwest Craven Water and Sewer Fund, there is some remaining functionality in that. That should be wrapping up soon. Page 14, our self-insurance fund. As many folks know, we're self-insured here at the county. That's the amount of money it will take to run through that. And then, most importantly, and I'm glad Leslie's here this morning, she's going to give you an update on revaluation with Justin Deese. But this morning, I'm pleased to say on page 14, under Section 24, the levy of taxes, the tax rate is .4448, which is revenue neutral. That is a revenue-neutral tax rate. Based on this, the levy that Leslie's estimating, and our collection rate of 98.97%, which we really feel strongly, and I think she may say later, we believe will be above that next year. We've had a really good collection year. Then, of course, the levy for all the different fire departments at the bottom of page 14. As you know, we take those individually here. Each commissioner, our commissioners, have worked with the fire departments. We've looked at their budgets, and this is where we're at. Most, and I think, Craig, please, I hope I don't say something wrong here at the end, every fire department is either at revenue-neutral or less than revenue-neutral. There is no above-revenue-neutral fire department tax rate. All right, page 15. The last section is, as the county manager, I'm also your budget officer for statute, and these are the things that we typically do to allow for the budget to be implemented and managed over the next year for the first time. Also, we have our schedule of fees, which was adopted, which needs to be adopted with the budget ordinance this year. There are no changes to fees unless required by law. This is mainly a restatement for the year. Obviously, we've talked to the board about looking at some of them over the next year and ways we need to adjust. Copies of this ordinance will be available in Craig's office, my office, and Leslie's office at the time it's adopted. I'm here for questions, and so is Craig.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for the county manager? All right, if not, what's the desire of the board?
I move that we approve this budget.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget ordinance. Discussion from the Board of Commissioners. Well, I do want to say, Jack first, on behalf of this board, we thank you and your staff for all the work that you put into this. Most citizens probably don't recognize it, but they start after January 1, start working on the next budget, and so it's a long process to get to today. One thing that I think we definitely want to say thank you to both of you, Craig and Jack, and the leadership team, is I think when you came to us and asked us, as the Board of Commissioners, what were we looking for, our concern during this reevaluation year was that we didn't want to put a greater burden on the taxpayers of this county. Even though this is a revenue-neutral budget, some properties went up significantly in this county, and we understand that they're going to see an increase regardless of what we do here today. But overall, I think the majority of our citizens will not. And another thing that we, as the Board of Commissioners, ask for is to be consistent and not raise any of our fees. Again, not to put an extra burden on our taxpayers, our citizens. And so y'all came to us. You did that. You also invested in county employees. We thank you for that. Never do we balance a budget on the back of our county employees. That's always one of the first things we talk about as a board. We thank you for doing that. And we've also made, I think, some investments into our fund balance. We've made, in not only general fund, but also for debt service and our CIP. So I think we're ready to go for another year, and it's all because of your leadership and your staff, and we thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any additional comments? Here, none. We do have the motion and a second to adopt the budget ordinance. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I say one thing before I depart? And I appreciate your words, but it's a team effort here, and I've got a great management team, budget team, so particularly Craig's leadership downstairs, top-notch in Craven County. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is the consent agenda. You have the June 5, 2023 reconvene session minutes, the tax releases and refunds, the public buildings budget amendment, the planning budget amendment, and the sheriff's smartphone donation. Are there any consent agenda items you desire to pull from today's?
I recommend that we adopt to get.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with no changes. Any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, this morning, we're honored to have with us Dr. Ossler, who is our new veterinarian director of the animal shelter. And before we introduce you, I'm going to turn it over to Jack, let him say a few words, and then you can come forward.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners. I'm extremely excited to have Dr. Ossler with us this morning. Back in the spring, the board developed a new position for the first county veterinarian. Dr. Ossler was already working part-time with us over at the shelter, doing some spaying and neutering clinics, and she was interested in the job, and she's on board now, I believe, for about three, three weeks? Am I close? Two weeks? Okay, I'm getting excited, but we're really happy to have her and love for her to come give a presentation, tell you a little bit about herself and what she's up to over at the shelter.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I am Dr. Tanya Ossler. As Jack so kindly introduced me, recently started over at the animal shelter. So I have been working over there one day a week for about two years, just doing spays and neuters for the adoptees, which I think has made a significant dent in our voucher program. Not having to send people home and chase them down to get their animals fixed because they're already going home with that also provides a significant savings for them as well to be able to adopt an animal and not have to then spend additional funds to get them fixed later on. But a little about me, I'm a veterinarian. I have been a vet for about nine years now, coming up in May, and I went to school for undergrad in the University of Florida and went to veterinary school at the University College Dublin in Dublin, Ireland. I was practicing in Florida after school where my parents were and just in private practice, kind of hone up my skills, moved up here about two years ago to be near my sister, who also lives in New Bern, and really just fell in love with the town. It's just a fantastic place. I have a three-year-old daughter, and raising her here has been phenomenal. But really, I never thought I would be a shelter vet until I started working at the shelter, and I just see the passion of the people who work there and the passion that the county has put into the shelter is just mind-blowing. I really think we can make a significant improvement in the animals' lives as well as the community. You know, short-term goals of kind of whipping everything into shape, making sure that they're getting top-notch veterinary care there, the animals themselves, as well as training the staff to recognize things, signs of illness, and just provide that care for the animals, and then educate the community about vaccines and trap-neuter-release programs and things like that that we would like to expand. But yeah, that's kind of our short-term goals. Long-term goals would be to be able maybe to offer low-cost spays and neuters to the community so that we can continue to work on the overpopulation problem, so.
All right, Commissioners, any comments, questions from the board?
I had a comment, and Dr. Ossler?
Mm-hmm.
As I was looking at, and this may be for Jack or whoever knows, as I was looking at animal service fees?
Yeah.
Adoption fees and stuff like that. And we do have, eventually, you know, for capacity purposes, we do occasionally have to euthanize animals. But before, it's 125 for a dog, for instance, and other fees for various animals. But before, like the last week before, we would go through the euthanasia process, and people are trying to adopt these, maybe harder to adopt animals for whatever reason, maybe they're older, don't play well with others, that last week, could we waive the fee? Is that a crazy thought? I don't know. Just to see if we could push that adoption out quicker?
We cannot waive the fee unless you allow us to. So the board's the one that sets the policy and how the fee schedule goes there, and we've modified it over time. I believe, I wish Scott was here. John, I don't know if you remember, I believe it was about two years ago, we consolidated fees into one adoption versus spaying and neuter, microchip into separate fees. But it's up to the board. If that's something you'd like for us to pursue, I'm sure Dr. Ossler could look at what are some options for that?
Sure.
And bring that back to the board?
I only thought processes, like, and I definitely want to keep the fees, but like, within that last week before we euthanize the animal, I mean, it may be an older animal, it may not play well with others, whatever, let's waive that fee, and maybe that will push that animal out before it's euthanized.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, and to continue with what my colleague said, I know in the past, for senior animals, we have waived fees for seniors adopting seniors as adoption programs.
Yes.
I'd be interesting to hear your take on best practices across the United States. I'm a transplant. I am, by the way, from South Georgia, North Florida.
Nice.
Spent a lot of time at the University of Florida's vet school.
Yes.
With it, because sometimes when you waive the fees, you end up with people taking home animals that end up back on the streets because they're not committed to it. With it, my question would be, are you planning on presenting to us a long-term shelter renovation adaption plan so that it better serves the community as, I will call it, a mini-vet clinic and better, more appropriate adoption programs in the past? We are supporters of the shelter. My husband and I, I believe in it. I believe in it from a health, public health perspective. So now that we have a real live vet as the director, I sure would like to see what you think the changes need to be made to the facility so that we can move forward to provide the service to this community that it really ought to be able to do.
Yeah, so I know already we have in plan to expand the, kind of close in the Sally Port area, which will then become an intake area for both county, any of the ACOs, the animal control officers, can come in and put animals in there so we can expand our housing inside as well as provide disease control within the shelter. As far as adopting out, we do have the $10 for senior cats for senior laps, we call it. And then I do think that providing a discounted fee, I mean, recently, we are inundated with kittens, and we did a two-for-one special last week, which we did get a few adoptees out, so keeping those animals. But for me personally, long-term goals would be, you know, start offering vaccinations for the local animals. I know we already do rabies for the public, expanding that to distemper, heartworm tests, providing heartworm prescriptions for the local, the local community, because heartworm is transmitted by mosquitoes, so you can imagine how heavy that could be in a local area, and then eventually being able to offer those spays and neuters for the animals. I know we are also remodeling my surgery suite to allow for more equipment so we can do more animals every day. Right now, I'm limited just by my personal time, but we are looking into getting new surgical equipment, a new anesthesia machine, so that I can essentially double the amount of animals we can put through so we can get everyone in the shelter fixed and then start offering to the public. You know, my lofty goals are maybe contacting the vet school and seeing if they want to send students to do spay-and-neuter clinics, things like that, to really expand to the, not only the local community, but the state at large.
I want to hear that. I want the citizens to hear that. Your long-term plan is to be offering discounted spay-and-neuter services to the general public.
Correct, correct. That is vaccines first, cats first, stray animals, feral cats, trap-neuter release, and then to the public.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that we're all glad you're here, and we look forward to the future with you.
Thank you. Really enjoyed it so far.
Well, Dr. Ossler, thank you for coming so early in your tenure with Craven County. I know you're just getting started, and, you know, you and I have talked on occasion already, and, you know, one thing that I've stressed to you, and you've already started doing that, and I want a closer working relationship with you and the public and also with you and the sheriff's office, the sheriff. And, you know, I'm appreciative for you reaching out to him, and he's been reaching out to you. We've got to have that with the joint effort that y'all are, you know, collaborative efforts that y'all are putting forth for our animals in this county. And so we're encouraged today as a board. You know, we're here, we stand behind you, and we want this to be successful. We want to see great things happen. And so please come back. We want you, we invite you to come back. We want our citizens to be able to hear what you're doing, to see the changes, positive changes that are occurring. So you've got an open invitation.
Well, thank you. I definitely will have a more organized presentation. We're working closely with my new operations manager, who has worked at multiple shelters in other states, to really kind of nail down where we needed to make changes to make this succeed. And the sheriff has been really open and honest, and we've just been working together to get everything moving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good day. And John, glad to have you too, sir. Thank you for being here. Did you have anything you want to say?
No.
Okay. Appreciate you being here. All right, item four today we have is the tax reevaluation presentation. We have Ms. Leslie and Justin with us, so good morning to both of you. Glad to have you.
Good morning, Chairman Jones. Good morning, Vice Chairman, Craven County Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me this morning. I want to come before you this morning to give you what I refer to as something of a report card. We've referenced already this morning, large projects take a lot of teamwork, so I want to go over all the things that had an impact here on this revaluation, how the property owners responded to us. I want to go over where we are today, how the next year looks, and how our next rebound going forward in that. For the 2016 countywide revaluation, it was decided by then that Craven- For the 2016 countywide revaluation, it was decided by then that Craven County would conduct a revaluation every four years. No control of our own, we had Hurricane Florence and then we went right into COVID. So it was decided instead of four years, it ended up being a seven-year delay. Now, the statutes say that you must, every North Carolina county must conduct a countywide revaluation at least once every eight years. So all the while the hurricane, the COVID was going on, the clock was still ticking, okay? When you ask a county government real estate appraiser, when do you start working on a revaluation? When are you working on a revaluation? That answer is every day. Every day, the appraiser is working on either the current revaluation or the upcoming revaluation. It never stops. Now, for a lot of us here in the room, we have a reference point as to when we began this revaluation in our own mind. So I want to take you through this, and if you will, Steve, we'll start with the first slide. On August 22nd, 2022, we mailed all the tax notices to the property owners. Well, in those tax notices for the real property, the real estate property owners of Craven County, we provided an insert announcing the upcoming countywide revaluation, okay? Now, it wasn't just to say it's coming. We gave information as to when the revaluation notices would be mailed, when would be the last day to submit an appeal, and to keep up with the ongoing updates, you could always refer to our website, okay? So that, in some of our minds, was the announcement and got it started, okay? That was in August of '22. The next month, in September of '22, a big thank you to Amber and Jasmine in our HR, they coordinated 31 social media posts between Facebook and Twitter. Now, you'll notice that in September of '22, up until the day that the revaluation notices were mailed, there were 22 posts on social media telling everyone, it's coming, be looking in your mailbox. It also promoted the town meetings, okay? And then from the time that the revaluation notices were mailed up until the day that you could submit an appeal, there were nine posts there. The next slide is the next month, October. Now, many of us here in the room were very involved in our town meetings. We had eight town meetings where we went out into the communities from the time of mid-October to the mid-November, and we had approximately 150 in attendance, okay? Next slide, Steve. While we were at the town meetings, we distributed brochures, a very general, broad information about the countywide revaluation. We distributed 1,250 brochures, not only at the town meetings, but we had at the front counter of the tax department and also at the four payment windows in our tax collection department. The last week in December, first week in January, we're probably distributed the most. That's when our taxpayers came in, those last week or two, and that's where a lot of the brochures were handed out then. So thank you to Craig, I remember Craig, really encouraging for the brochures and they were a very good resource. Thank you for that. All right, let's talk a little bit about this slide. This was something a little new and wasn't, didn't plan on the reaction we got, but we got very good reaction from our citizens. I came to you, you'll see the top right slide, I came to you on February 20th, one week exactly before the revaluation notices mailed. I gave a 30-minute presentation preparing all of us for what is to come now that we're ready to mail the notices. I gave very good information on why our revaluation is solid, and I also gave you a very good update on our real estate market, which is exactly what drives the revaluation values. You'll see the next one in the middle, that's the presentation, the PDF that was posted on our website. Now, the bottom right corner, you'll see that is a video. We made the 29, the 30-minute video, and then we posted that on the front page of our website. That video became very, very resourceful for when I received emails, I could send the link and say, watch the video. I was regularly being told by whether on my staff or folks in the community, hey, I watched that video, I learned a lot in that. We most definitely will be having another video for our 2027 revaluation. 1,103, 1,103 viewers watched that video, okay? For the next slide, the next video, if you remember, one of our advancements in this revaluation is that a property owner can go to our GIS website and search the comparable sales that were used to value their property. On my webpage, we have, we have three ways that you can learn how to do this. One was on the revaluation notice itself on the front page, gave the steps on how to go and see on the GIS website what comparables were used. There were two other sources for instructions on that matter. You could go to the Tax Administration website, a subcategory, all of it's on, and we gave a tutorial, just a couple of minute tutorial, you could watch the video. And you could also, right below the video, for the written instructions on how to search your comparable sales. That video tutorial had 676 views, so we got really good feedback on that as well. For the next slide, we had a very general video to talk about sort of the highlights of a revaluation. This is very typical of North Carolina counties having revaluations. Most tax department websites will have something of a general, broad video there. It had 440 views. So I took these three videos and I thought, okay, well, this is nice, but how does it compare? You know, now when I make presentations, I report numbers, but I also compare numbers. If you'll go to the next slide, I found very interesting. This is as of May 31st, 2023. Now, keep in mind, all of your commissioner meetings are videos on YouTube. So as of May 31st, Craven County Government has exactly 240 videos. The top four most-watched videos is the one where I came to you on February 20th, the next one, 860 views, and the following, 822 views for March 13th, 2020, and March 17th. Both of those matters were for COVID. And then the fourth most-watched video is our search comparable sales. So we now know that we want to have at least two more things going, excuse me, going into the next revaluation is, we know we want to have a presentation the week before we mail notices. And then we also want to continue the subcategory, the resource for the citizens to search their comparable sales. It turned out to be a very useful resource for our citizens. This slide, I began working on restructuring the Tax Administration website page around May of 2022. And I have to give a lot of credit here to Don Wayne Wright in our IT department. I worked him hard. And Steve will agree. But it paid off exponentially. I'm so proud of this website. I'm so proud of the resource that it has turned out to be to our citizens. If you notice on the left-hand side, on the blue bar, those are all of our categories for the Tax Administration webpage. But if you go over to the right side, that blue bar, those are 14 subcategories of just the revaluation 2023 category. 12 out of those 14 are directly tied to the revaluation. The last two, you can go to GIS, which is very helpful to the revaluation. And then on every subcategory, I always put that you can pay a bill, a mobile, okay? So thank you very much to Don Wayne Wright. A lot of work has gone into that and I will continue with that. So now we have all this information out there, a lot of resources. Let's go to this next slide. Very, very interesting. So we mailed the revaluation notices on Monday, February 27th. We have a new feature, a new resource for our property owners, where you can go to the GIS website and search the comparable sales. You look on the one on the left, the first one, that is Monday, February 27th, that was the day we mailed the notices, okay? It's a very average day for GIS, and there were 3,441 clicks on parcels for the GIS website. That's an ordinary day. The next day on Tuesday, February 28th, that's the day that the values were made public on the GIS website. Revaluation notices are getting ready to hit the mailboxes the next day. So there was a little bit of an increase there, 4,065. Now, the next day on Wednesday is when the revaluation notices hit the mailboxes, and you can see that sharp uptick to 8,031. And then on Thursday, 9,364. And then it dropped off a little bit by Friday. So the folks were very interested in going to the GIS website to see how the appraiser determined the value, to see what the values are for their neighbors. 9,364 was the largest number of inquiries on one day. Now, the next slide is very interesting as well. That week's worth is 15,123 clicks. There's another figure there, right below on the top right, it says total inquiries, 30,858. What these two numbers represent is that the 15,000 figure is the number of parcels that were clicked on one time. So 15,123 parcels were clicked on just that first week. The 30,000 is the total number of clicks, because you can click on a parcel more than one time. You can go back to it, this and that. There are a total number of 30,858 clicks on the GIS website. So now we have all the information out there. We've provided great resources for our citizens. We've told everyone we can possibly think of how we could tell them revaluation is coming. So we mailed the revaluation notices on Monday, February 27th. This slide is what I consider the report card of our revaluation. 1,682 appeals were submitted for this revaluation. I had estimated 2,400, possibly up to 3,000. So you can see I'm very well pleased and can say that the hard work of our entire team has well paid off. Craven County has 56,505 taxable real estate parcels. So 1,682 calculates to a percentage of 2.977%. Very good return, okay? Remember, we had another advancement in this revaluation that our software system could provide a means for the property owner to submit their appeal online. We had a total of 317 appeals submitted online. And currently today, as of Friday, we have 70 appellants, 70 parcels, who have filed to continue to go to our Board of Equalization and Review. I expect that number to become smaller over the next couple of weeks. We still work things out along the way and it's very typical for that number to decrease. Of all the appeals submitted that I saw coming in, if I had to pick one topic that I heard the most, would be this next slide was an email that I took directly from one of our citizens, one of our property owners. And I want to take this time this morning, not only to let you know, but I want us to dial in, dissect this topic, because when I leave here this morning, I want all of us to have a very clear understanding as to why we did, what we did, when we did it, and how our future looks over the next year and for our next revaluation that will be January 1 of 2027. So give me just a minute here and hang on with me, because I think this is very important for our citizens to know and understand, okay? Just received your new property tax assessment and like every one of my neighbors, was quite shocked at the large increase in assessed value of my property. I think we can agree, we all, we all heard that. I understand that you are matching current retail values of property sales in this area, but values of homes are at historic and inflated highs. Should you not have anticipated that the housing market will eventually tank in the future and adjusted your figures accordingly? Is your office going to do a readjusted appraisal in the future to react to market value drops so that county citizens will be treated fairly when paying their taxes? Why we did what we did, when we did it. Why did we do this? Because North Carolina General Statute 105-286 says that every North Carolina county is to have a reappraisal at least once every eight years. Now, you've heard me mention, we waited seven years. And I commend that decision because you're going to see later in a couple of, that we made the right call, we did not position ourselves behind the eight ball waiting till the very last year. What we did, North Carolina General Statute 105-283 says that all counties are to have their reappraisal at current market value. The market is the buyers and the sellers. So to appraise current market value for this reappraisal, for every reappraisal, what is the property worth on January 1 of that revaluation year? When we did it, we had seven years in this revaluation and we had to do by the eighth year. But there's something that North Carolina has experienced over the last couple of years, and it's called a state mandate. Under North Carolina General Statute 105-286, we're going to dissect this in the next slide, and I want to explain to you how Craven County fell within that statute. You see letter A at the top, that is for every North Carolina county to have a revaluation. But under that category, letter A, there's one and two. Number one, just list all the counties in North Carolina. Number two is called the mandatory advancement. A county whose population is 75,000 or greater, and that's Craven County, must conduct a reappraisal of real property when the county's sales assessment ratio falls between 85% and 115%. When the sales ratio, and I'm going to, well, I'll just give the example now, a sales ratio, our sales ratio you're going to see in the next couple of slides is 98%. And what that means is, when a property sells for 100,000 on the open market, the county has it appraised at 98,000. That's sales ratio. What is our value, what is the ratio of our value to the current market value, okay? So this 85 to 115% is a cumulative effect of a countywide, okay? We're going to come back to letters A and B, but you can see, letter A, that when you are under a mandate, you have two choices. You can conduct your countywide revaluation the third year following the year that the county received the notice. Now, we received the notice in 2022, so if we add three years to that, we're looking at 2025. We could not conduct a countywide revaluation in 2025 because that put us outside the eight-year requirement. That's why we did what we did, when we did it. So we go to letter B, the eighth year following the year of the county's last reappraisal. And that's where we fell into why we did in 2023. Let's go to the next slide, Steve. I've talked about us being under a state mandate, that I receive a letter from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. This is that letter. The first paragraph, there was a little bit of a confusion by Department of Revenue and they were apologizing for that. They had said we could do our revaluation in 2025, but then they caught it and said, oh no, that falls on the ninth year, you can't do that. So a little clarification on that one. The second paragraph there, since Craven County's last reappraisal was in 2016, by statute, the next reappraisal must be conducted no later than 2024. We understand that currently Craven County is set to complete the next reappraisal on January 1 of 2023. The 2022 reporting to the DOR was that our sales ratio was 76.88%, that is below the 85%. We are under a mandate and we chose to do the 2023, and you're going to find in the next couple of slides why that was a good decision. So let's talk about sales ratio a little bit. These are the North Carolina counties that had a countywide revaluation, and we now have all reported to the state, all 100 counties of our sales ratio. This is how we fall, you can see on the first column on the left side, there's Craven, just a little bit down, we are at 98.00. That sales ratio is a cumulative effect of all of the year of 2022. And you can see where some of the other counties fall. Brunswick County is exactly at 100% when a house is placed on the mark. When a house is placed on the market for 100,000, and it sells for 100,000, and the county's value is 100,000. You can see, I believe there's one a little over, yeah, Alamance is at 104.22. Henderson County, I think, is very comparable in looking at counties to Craven, and their sales ratio is 99.9. What I've been very interested in, and I went back and looked at some records, and having conversations among my peers throughout the state, there's a lot of buzz right now that the counties in North Carolina that had a countywide revaluation the year before us in 2022, because we all know that this real estate market has been hopping, keeping a lot of us busy. So we went back and looked at the reporting for this year. What is the sales ratio of the counties that had a countywide revaluation in 2022? There are 11 counties. Seven out of the 11 counties have already fallen in one year under the 85% market. This slide is a very good indication that our real estate market is strong, and I'm going to show you in just a minute, it has not stopped. Seven out of the 11 counties of the 2022 revaluation have already dropped. They are now under a state mandate to conduct a reappraisal in the next three years. They will be having a revaluation in 2026. Very important slide. You'll remember when I came to you on February 20th, we talked a lot about the real estate market being strong. You'll see the bottom portion, that's what I presented to you on February 20th. I've been tracking it each month since, and we are one month away from the first half of 2023. There's no change in the market. The average days on market are still within, if you remember, I told you, one to 90 days is considered excellent market. See our days on market here recently in the 30s? If you take the percentage increase, and you find the average of that percentage increase, that's 12.88%. Remember, these are straight numbers. There is no agenda behind this reporting. This is taken directly from our local MLS, the Neuse River Region MLS. To point out even more so for our real estate market, you take this average of 12.88. This will be a very good indication of where we are and where we're headed. By May 31st, we had to report to Department of Revenue our sales ratio, where we are as of January 2nd through May 31st of this year. Our 98.00 sales ratio has now dropped to 86.8. We have already dropped 12 points in the first five months of this year. We are 1.9 percentage points from dropping to a state mandate. What that 86% represents is that when the property is placed on the open market and it sells for 100,000, that means Craven County Tax Department has that property appraised at 86,000. That's how much the market is continuing to increase. Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Any questions about this slide?
What if the property sells for less than its price value?
Yes, ma'am. Same thing. And I'm going to talk about that on our next slide. Yes, ma'am.
And one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
In the beginning, when you started, you mentioned the 51,000 notices that were sent out.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that 15,000 properties or 15,000 individuals?
51,500 individuals.
I mean, 51,000. That's individuals, not because some of them got more than one.
Own multiple parcels.
Yeah, okay.
That's where we are. Where do we go from here? This is what I very much want to dissect for you. For the 2016 countywide revaluation, remember, it's Craven County's approved by the commissioners. We will conduct a countywide revaluation every four years. 2027 will be our next revaluation. But let's look at what the market is doing. Let's say the market continues to show the trend that it's been showing. We're going to be in a mandate come this time next year, if the market continues. So let's go back to the statute. Let's go to letter A. The third year following the year that the county received the notice, I will receive the notice in May of 2024. What's three years after 2024? 2027. Let's say this afternoon, by tonight, the market drops. Tomorrow morning, we wake up and we're in a depression. Now, our values are more than 115% come May of 2024. We're above the 115%. Letter A. I will receive the notice in May of '24. We have three years to conduct a reappraisal, 2027. Let's say that the market plateaus. It evens out. We have 0% increase, 0% decrease. Three years, 2027. Regardless of the market, we are set for a countywide revaluation in 2024. So to answer this email that expresses a lot of the sentiment, are we going to adjust the values when this market changes? Yes. But all the while, we're going to have a countywide revaluation every four years, because that has been what's voted upon by the commissioners before 2016. I say once again, thank you to the commissioners who voted for every four years. And it's right in line with Mecklenburg, Wague, a lot of the more real estate active markets, four years. I have one more slide, one more number. This is my most favorite slide of my presentation. This slide is the one I'm the most proud of. We have nine real estate appraisers, nine folks on our real estate appraisal staff. We could not be here this morning without these nine folks. Justin, if you will, stand for just a second. Very proud of Justin Dees. He's been with Craven County, I believe, since 2006. He's been both a residential and a commercial appraiser. He stepped up to the call. He oversees this division, and he is very well respected, not only among our staff, but I can testify that he is very well respected among our peers throughout the state. He has led this team through a very contentious revaluation, a very hard, challenging revaluation, and he has stepped up and answered the call. I'm very, very proud of Justin. We have a couple of other folks, the other eight I do want to recognize. You'll see Townships 1, 3, 5, 6, and 9. Alan, Alan Strong. He really chipped in. We needed an extra set of hands. He understands the definition of team. He has really stepped up to help us out. Township number two, I'm most proud of Mark Hollins. His first countywide revaluation, he's handled places like Fairfield Harbor that is a moving target at times, very challenging neighborhood. And he has definitely stepped up. We have good results, we've had good feedback, and he has done an excellent job. Very proud to have him on the team. Township number seven, Eric Fritz, a very smart young man, a very populated township. He has handled that workload very well. His first revaluation as well. Township number eight, Hal Isling. He was very instrumental with Blake, I'm sorry, Lou and Bryce in our GIS in creating how to search your comparable sales. Very sharp guy. Township number eight and present use value. I get a little emotional when I think of Andrea McConnell. Back in the day, before my time, there was a need for an appraiser to take on the present use value. She stepped up. She said, I'll do it. She was scheduled to retire earlier this year. I asked her to stay. She agreed for about another three months. Went back and said, Andrea, you want to stay a little longer? She said, I'll stay. She said, I'd like to stay and do a little more cleanup. And I said, well, if you're going to stay that longer, can you stay a little bit longer after that? Just not ready to let her go. She is the true definition of loyal, and you must have loyalty to your team. Very, very appreciative of Andrea, especially during this revaluation. Administrative data entry, April Mada. She's our spark plug. She takes very good care of our appraisers. She is the one who oversees the Appeal Track Module, keeping the appraisers straight, all these appeals that are submitted online, and we have gotten very good feedback and emails of the customer service she has provided on behalf of our department. Robert Harvey and Alan Walters, they joined our team in April of 2023. You are going to see very good effects from these two young men, very sharp, very smart, very techy. So the improvements and the advancements that you're going to see in the 2027 revale, these two will definitely have a hand in that. Very proud of them. I want to thank the commissioners for your support, not only with the software system, getting out to the town meetings, all the times I've wanted to come and report to you, let you know how we are. Every one of you have been a pleasure to work with, very professional. I want to thank Jack and Jean. We spent the last six weeks before the revaluation, I met with them weekly, making sure all the details were being handled, the i's were dotted, t's were crossed. That was a very valuable experience for me. And I've mentioned before in other presentations that Craven County is the third county in which I've served. This is my fourth countywide revaluation in my career. So I think I'm very well qualified to make this next statement. But I want to personally thank, on my behalf, my county manager, Jack White. We had some speed bumps along the way. I had just some general questions about revaluation. I had questions about, how would Craven County like for us to approach this or that? Jack has always been available for my call. But the one thing that I most appreciate about Jack and his support, he demands my very best. Demands my very best, and I'm just even more excited to get to work on revaluation 2027. So thank you, Jack. Commissioners, this concludes my presentation. You always, every time, every time I can ever help you, any of your citizens, please don't hesitate to let me know.
All right, Commissioners, questions from the board. You want?
I'd like to say thank you to a very professional revaluation, and also for all of your outreach to the citizens across this county. I think the results speak for themselves, but I don't think I've ever been as well-informed over what was going on, what worked, what didn't. You and your team, all of your team have done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I had made a call to you and asked you to make a comparison for me. And you asked me how much time I had, and I said, take the time you need. And believe me, it was really unbelievable how fast you got back to me. Thank you.
Thank you again, Leslie. Appreciate your presentation today. Thank you. Commissioners, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back.
Quick coverage at all of our schools. Our gas overage for the SROs is, has increased. We are responding to more incidents at our schools now than we ever have, which means it's kind of an all hands on deck when we have issues at schools and trying to get there to assist them, also with our special assignments. And case in point, during our New Bern graduations, we had twenty-five deputies assigned to our school graduation. We also had a number of them assigned to a Havelock graduation and a West Craven graduation, all of which were happening at the same time. All of them were without incident. But the days of us just sending two or three to a ballgame, five or six to a graduation are over. So it has increased our fuel capacity because our deputies are more mobile now in regards to SROs.
Okay, any questions for Sheriff Hughes? Are here none? Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $29,000 for the SRO fuel expense overages. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right. Item B. Chairman, the second one is jail, rent, board prisoners and contract service budget amendment. The rent for onboard prisoners and contracted services has foreseen some unforeseen expenses this year. The biggest part that I wanted to bring to your attention, the reason for this increase was as we had the raise the age for juveniles, which now is up to 18 years of age. That means every time we take a juvenile into custody, as it has been in the past, we have to transport them out of county once we find a facility that can house them. And our portion of that is about $135 a day. We pick up half of it, the state picks up the other half. So it is very, very expensive to house and transport juveniles. I added in here, I wanted you to see just kind of the number of juveniles per day and the cost associated with what we were having to do with juveniles. You see, we started in July of '22, May and June of this year still pending, but you see the cost associated with housing these juveniles. And it's unforeseen. You never know when a New Bern Police Department, a Havelock Highway Patrol, my deputies are going to bring in a juvenile, then we have to deal with them from that point on. That means we have to find a place that can house them, and then it's our responsibility to get them there, as well as bring them back for any court proceedings. So we are spending now a lot of time transporting what would have been an adult in the past, which is now a juvenile.
Excuse me, what ages are we talking about here? At any age up to 18?
Yes, sir.
And what was it before?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Then about a year and a half ago, it was raised to 18.
Was that done by the General?
That was done by the General, yes, sir. Now, and what we see, a lot of the reason for the increase is our of-age criminals, adults, are getting juveniles to commit the crimes. Because they know the lengthy process and that they know more than likely the juveniles are going to get a slap on the wrist and put back out onto the street. So we are having to deal with this. And once again, the, just the increase in time that we are having to transport and house, where it takes about $35 to $40 a day to house an adult, $135 a day for a juvenile.
Just a quick question, is there any allowance and statute to a charge municipality for any of this when they drop these folks off?
You know, we have looked into that, and right now, it's our responsibility as a service provider, if you will. The county, as you well know, we do provide many services and the municipalities do not. This is one of those where the burden is on us. Once they're dropped off, it's our responsibility to make sure they go to whatever location we can find them. That could be Raleigh, Wilmington, Greenville, Asheville. And for those counties that do house juveniles, it is a very lucrative program.
All right, additional, I'm sorry.
Also, the other half of that is Drake Janitorial and our GFL trash services.
Okay. All right, additional questions for Sheriff Hughes? I reckon Sheriff, under the services that are given to these juveniles, is they continue to receive schooling, education?
Yes, sir. And that's part of why they have to go to a separate facility that offers educational services. They can't have any interaction with the adult population. So they have to be in a separate building, which usually means a separate facility in regards to kitchen, education, and their free time. Totally separate rules that they have to go by.
I don't want to keep harping on this, but I reckon my last question would be, since you being sheriff, have you seen the numbers? Are they increasing every year of these juveniles? I mean, can we expect, you know, I mean, looking and not knowing what's going to happen, but I mean, can we continue to expect an increase in this expenditure from our line?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm on the JCPC board, and one of the reports gave 31, I think in the month of May, 31 young people that were at violations.
That's probably about the norm, yes, ma'am. Did you say that was in?
Large number of girls that we even.
Wow.
There, and they are, we're seeing where juveniles are involved in more violent crimes now, drug, gang-related, gun-related crimes.
Okay, additional questions? All right, here none. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the $150,000 budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is for rent, board prisoners and contract services. Additional discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes, all right. And item C.
Chairman, the third one is for the Sheriff's side of the House, our Patrol Division, the SRO is a separate line item. So this is for fuel expenses for the Patrol deputies and all others on the Sheriff's side of the House, where we've seen an increase once again in gas usage. And just to touch on this just a little bit, when we talk about transport, if we're just talking about adults alone on any given day, three to five, six of my deputies will be transporting involuntary committals, inmates to the other side of the state for mental health evaluations and treatment, trips to the Dick Center in Jacksonville, Asheville, Winston-Salem. This is an everyday, seven-day-a-week, 365-day, and transports now are at a record high. And there's no one else that can do it other than an armed officer. And once again, that is a service by general statute that we must provide.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the Sheriff as far as the increases. But what I'm questioning is the patrol cause that we have at construction sites. Are we getting additional monies from them because of the gasoline?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay.
All right. Vice Chair, just a, excuse me, a general question. The new fuel center, has that proved to be a positive thing for your people?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I mean, just if nothing else, the fact that we're not at the mercy of the city of New Bern for them to shut the tanks off with an hour notice, if we're lucky to get that.
And convenience.
Very convenient for us, yes, sir.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, Sheriff, this may be a stupid question, and I apologize. I understand by statute, you have to transport with armed officers. Is there any type of armed officer transport service that is available to be used, or does it have to be your deputies? My concern from that is when your deputies are moving everybody across the state, here, there and yonder, they are not available to be on the roads patrolling for our citizens in this county.
That's correct. So there is no service, and the statute will not allow us to use someone else. Now, a New Bern police officer could if we had a separate line item for part-time transport sworn, but at the end of the day, it has to be a sworn armed officer, because many of the people are violent.
Right, and they're in the same situation, they want to have their officers on the road, just like you did.
Yep, and there's been a number of times when we've been halfway between here and Winston-Salem, where we've had to pull off the side of the road to calm them down, where they were trying to do armed.
Oh, I'm not arguing that you need armed sworn officers. I was just asking if there were any other alternatives, and for the benefit of our population here, the answer is there's really not.
No, ma'am.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
All right, Mr. White?
Sheriff Hughes, and I've spent a tremendous amount of time over the last year or so meeting with our folks in the mental health arena, trying to figure this problem out. It's certainly not gotten any better over the last two years, Sheriff, and we've had lots of meetings. And what it comes down to is the ability for the medical providers to coordinate the time a person leaves so that the sheriff has options, meaning that if you wait to just do it when you want to, you're going to get Winston-Salem.
Correct.
He's going to go there four times a day. If we can time it, and we might be able to get to Jacksonville, which is a huge benefit to the sheriff, or maybe we get to Goldsboro, but it seems like we're just really ready to press the easy button sometimes, say, ah, just send them on to Winston-Salem or Asheville, which doesn't do us any favors. So we're continuing to work on that. I don't know that we've seen the light in the tunnel yet, but we're still working.
Really, we're at, and Jack, and he's correct, we've met with the hospital a number of times. We are kind of at their mercy, you know, when we transport an IBC there, or one self-checks in there, and then they are deemed appropriate or necessary to have further treatment. The hospital puts out the call for a bed, and the first one that responds is who, you know, that's where the person goes. And then it's incumbent, required by law, for us to do the transport, not only there, we're notified when they're done, we're required to go pick them up and bring them home as well. So it is, it's very time-consuming, and, you know, like Commissioner Mitchell said, you know, when that person's transporting, they are not available in the county to take calls. And that is a huge burden, not only the men and women that are out there trying to run call-to-call, but it also affects response times, so.
And circumstances require that you only take one at a time.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay, additional questions? All right, the great information, Sheriff, thank you. So, okay, we need a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment, amount of $55,000 for vehicle fuel expense overages. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes. Sheriff, we thank you for being here. You got anything you want to share with us today?
Yes, Chairman, I do. I want to comment on the budget. I want to say this was a very good public safety budget. Your investment in school safety by taking over the SROs, the funding of the SROs and Havelock is huge. It's something that really we had to do, and I want to commend you, each of you, for doing that. Thank you so much. Also, for supporting us on our drug enforcement activities through funding another narcotics investigator, as these narcotics are taking more lives in this county than anything else. That will continue to be a top priority of the office, and I appreciate your support. I also want to thank Jack and his team, been great to work with. He does a phenomenal job of pushing back, and as a taxpayer, I do appreciate that. I don't always get, but we always meet in the middle for the common good of the county, my office, and as y'all support our folks. So this is a very good budget from a public safety standpoint, and I thank y'all.
If you don't, I don't want to put you on the spot, and definitely deals with personnel, but I mean, how are we looking far as our SOR positions? Are we going to be able to start off the school year, you think, with filling these positions?
We have, we have some folks in the process. Hopefully, they will get through there right now. We've got one of these four positions y'all funded in the budget for SROs. One is committed and will be hired within the next week or so. The other three, I think we have two in the process, so I'm optimistic that we will. Regardless, our schools will be covered.
Yes. Additional questions for Sheriff?
I did, when we were talking about graduations and covering those, like New Bern High School and those places which were, do we ever get help from the cities for that? I mean.
New Bern did help us with traffic-related stuff out on 17, which is a big help, although, you know, that falls on us as well to make sure traffic can come in and out. But in regards to in the, on campus, the Chief of Police was there with me, so he did help.
Great, that's good. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, Sheriff, appreciate you being here this morning. Have a good day and be safe. All right, item eight is Human Resources. We have Ms. Amber Parker. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. I have for you this morning, three personnel resolution amendments for consideration. And the first is one that we look at just about every year when we have changes to our health insurance rates. The Craven County Self-Injured Health Insurance Plan will experience a 5% rate increase for this fiscal year. The rates of retiree health insurance are paid by the county or specified in the Craven County Personnel Resolution based upon the fiscal year 22-23 rates, as shown in the current policy language attached in your packets. The 5% increase will be passed along to be paid by the retirees unless the above referenced policy is amended to reflect the fiscal year 23-24 rates, as shown in that language. So this is a request to amend the personnel policy to change the health insurance rates retired, paid for retirees.
All right, first, are there any questions for Ms. Parker on this? Here none, do we have a motion to approve the amended Personnel Resolution section?
Make a motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. This is related to the retiree health insurance. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, B.
Thank you. The Craven County Personnel Resolution, Article 7, Conditions of Employment, Section 13, Identification Badge Policy sets the price that employees pay when they have to replace their identification badge because they were careless with it or lost it. And it's been $5 for the longest time. The prices of replacing those badges have increased, and especially now that it's been integrated with our DoorFob access system, as well as our FuelMaster system. So we're asking that the Board amend the fee from $5 to $7.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended Personnel Resolution section related to identification badge policy. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, C.
And the third item, the Craven County Personnel Resolution, Article 4, The Pay Plan, Section 16, Incentive Pay Policy, provides for a $2,400 incentive payment to be paid in a per-pay-period installment for certain social worker positions, hospice nurses and school resource officers. The current policy states the incentive payment should be applied to positions assigned to adult and child protective services, and it lists the eligible positions as social worker three, social worker supervisor and program manager, but it leaves out the social worker investigative treatment and assessment positions. And that incentive has been applied to those positions, they're working in investigations in adult and child protective services. So this is a request to just clean up that policy to make it in alignment with the practice and to add the social worker INT position to that list of eligible positions for the incentive.
Okay, any questions?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith to approve the amended Personnel Resolution section related to incentive pay policy. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Amber. All right, next, we have Finance, Mr. Craig.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Commissioners, I have several year-end budget amendments for you this morning for your consideration. The first one is transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund. During the current fiscal year, the county's experienced enhanced revenue collections over our original budget projections from several sources. Those include the $1.4 million in additional revenues from our Medicaid sales tax hold harmless, and $1.6 million earned from interest on investments. It is requested that these additional revenues collected over our budgeted projections be set aside and transferred into the Capital Reserve Fund for future capital projects and expenditures. This transfer will fully fund the county's five-year CIP through the year 2029.
Well, that's great. Okay, we have a motion and a second, that is to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $3 million, and this is a transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund. Discussion. That's just wonderful, to, you know, and to be able to fund this, and you said through 2029?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's awesome. All right, any further discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Howard.
Okay.
Isn't that right, or who was it?
Mitchell.
Mitchell, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Missed that.
That's her voice.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes. All right.
All right, so with the good comes the bad, here is the second one, which would be our health and workers' comp benefit claims budget amendment. Our benefit claims for both health insurance and workers' compensation through May have been running ahead of budget at 16.5% and 11.8% respectively. As a result, it's expected that the total claims paid will exceed our original budget projections. It is estimated that an additional $1,700,000 will be needed to continue paying the claims through the end of the fiscal year. Additional revenues over budget, over original budgets for insurance premiums and some of the rebates that we get back from providers have been identified, along with $590,000 of front balances, which will be needed in order to cover the increases through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Sheriff, may I?
Yes.
Craig, when you say front balance, front balance out of the self?
Insurance fund.
Yes, sir.
Not out of the general fund?
$590,000 from the self-insurance fund.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any questions for Mr. Warren on this?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $1,700,000 for the health and workers' comp benefit claims. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes.
Okay, the third and final budget amendment is a sales tax transfer to the Debt Service Fund. Our sales tax collections through the month of June, which are March sales, are currently running 8.3% ahead of our budget, which with three months remaining, that would be April, May and June's collections that will, that are anticipated, and those will, as anticipated, those will exceed our original budget projections as well. As required by general statutes, the portion of the Article 40 and the 42 are considered restricted and must be held or set aside for the school capital or debt service. Based on our current trends, it is estimated an additional $500,000 will be needed to continue transferring the school's portion of the sales tax collections into the Debt Service Fund for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Warren on this? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $500,000 for sales tax transfer to the Debt Service Fund. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes, thank you, appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, we come to item 10, which is appointments. You have there before you pending, current and upcoming. Under pending, we see, you have a list there, Community Child Protection, Craven County Clean Sweep, Emergency Medical Services, Fireman's Relief Fund, Highway 70 Quarter Committee and the Voluntary Agriculture District. Commissioner Smith, I think you said you had a nominee?
Under Community Child Protection Team, I am recommending Antoinette Boswick for that position. It goes along with her work as well.
Okay, I think that did come before the Board several weeks ago, and we had to look into one or two things. So you're bringing that nomination. So we have a nomination of Antoinette Boswick for the Child Protection Team, additional nominations from the Board. Here none, we were set her by acclamation. All right, any additional nominations under pending from Commissioners? All right, here none, we would then move to current. Under East Carolina Workforce Development Board, you first one you have is Mr. William Green, who seeks reappointment whilst desired of the Board.
I'm moved to reappoint.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Green. Do we have additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next, you have Mr. Anthony Cruz, who also serves, who seeks reappointment. Are there any nominations?
I'll appoint.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Cruz. Are there additional nominations from the Board? Here none, we were set by acclamation. You have two seats here. I know you have one seat, John Wilson, who has moved and has vacated the seat, but you do have an applicant of Jason Trull, who seeks appointment whilst desired of the Board.
I nominate Mr. Trull.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Trull. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we were set by acclamation, Mr. Trull. All right, then you go to Fireman's Relief Fund, you have Mr. Joshua Wilford, Township Two, Little Swift Creek. Commissioner Mark, this is in your district.
I approve him.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Wilford, additional nominations. Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next, you have Fire Tax Commissioner for Township Six, Joanne Slagle. Commissioner Howard?
Moved to approve.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Slagle, and additional nominations. Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next, you have the Emergency Medical Services Board, you have Mr. Robert Boyd, Boyd, from the City of New Bern. Vice Chair Booker?
I nominate him.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Boyd, are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Local Emergency Planning Committee, you have applicant Brooke Zalini, who seeks appointment to Seat Six, City of New Bern, whilst desired of the Board.
I'll nominate Mrs. Zalini.
Okay. All right, we have the nomination of Mrs. Zalini. Do you have additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next, you have the applicant Mark Gross, or Groze, who seeks appointment to Seat 18 for the Coast Guard, whilst desired of the Board.
I would approve that.
Okay, we have a nomination, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, you have Christopher Devon, who seeks appointment for the Court Counselor position.
I nominate him.
Okay, we have a nomination, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be Wendy Peeden, who seeks reappointment for the DSS seat.
Nominate Ms. Peeden.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Peeden, are there additional nominations? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next, you have two open seats, Jamar Wallace and Carlton Metz for the City of New Bern. Madam Clerk, you'll be reaching out to those respected.
Stacy's working.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then you have the Craven County Recreation Advisory Board. You have first Mr. Matt Webb, who is seeking reappointment whilst desired of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to defer that for two weeks if possible.
You want to defer all of these?
Yes.
Okay, is there objection from the Board? Here no objection from the Board, we're going to defer all of the Recreation Advisory Committee[1652.88] into our next meeting, okay? All right, next page, you have upcoming terms expiring. Are there additional nominations that need to be brought before the Board today? Here none, we will now move to the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady.
No report, Mr. Grady.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, we have the County Manager's Report, Mr. Vike.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, give my quick. Just so I can use the computer. I do have two items on the agenda for the Board today and then I'll finish with some comments. In July of twenty nineteen, I came before the Board in the manager's comments for the appointment of Ronnie Antry to a four-year term as the tax assessor, that's by statute. Because Ronnie retired during this term, Leslie Young was appointed in November, excuse me, November of twenty twenty-one to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Antry, which expires on July first of twenty twenty-three. I'm asking today that you appoint Leslie Young, beginning on July first, to a four-year term as the Craven County Tax Assessor. Leslie gave a great presentation this morning, I have a lot of confidence in her and her team and Justin, she's done a fantastic job. I'll tell you, it's not easy coming in and doing a revow like this in your first year and a half and she's done a great job with it. She has my full support and I recommend her to the Board for a four-year term.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Leslie Young to a four-year term as Craven County Tax Assessor. Is any discussion?
Just what a great professional job. I look forward to four more years.
Okay, thank you. Any additional? Here none, Madam Clerk, I want to ask you, if you will, please call the roll on this.
Sure. Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right, thank you, appreciate it, Ms. Young, thank you for what you do.
Congratulations, Leslie. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I also have item B here and I'm going to kind of tag-team this with Commissioner Mark. Before you is the Dick's Center, Dick's Crisis Center MOU. It is a three-county partnership between Onslow, Craven, and Carteret, along with Trillium, Onslow Memorial Hospital, and Carteret Hospital. We have an internal partnership with our hospital on this where they provide funding in years past to help us with this. This agreement is a one-year agreement, it is the same as it has been since the beginning, which I believe Commissioner Mark was twenty seventeen, was the first year we implemented this. It is for three hundred thousand dollars, as in the past, the county has budgeted two hundred thousand dollars in our mental health line to support this through Trillium and our hospital has also provided money. I believe we still have some conversation Commissioner Mark and I need to have next year, but anyway, this will run through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, the agreement is attached. I have spoken with the Board and I want Commissioner Mark to talk a little bit about it. There, there has been some leadership changes with our, excuse me, with Recovery International, who runs that facility. There's also been leadership changes in Onslow County Government, which because of the nature of its location in Jacksonville, they have a more hands-on, eye-on-the-football kind of thing there. I have spoken with both staffs in the last week, I feel confident that those changes are, they're going to work out the kinks. I've also spoken with the Sheriff and folks at the hospital over the last year, trying to make sure we have some synergy there on getting folks to the facility and using it for detox. As I looked at the numbers, and I did this last week, we're averaging about eleven to thirteen individuals a month that are receiving detox services. And the way I see that is that's eleven to thirteen lives per month that we are potentially saving. I just put that out there. Commissioner Mark, I'm going to turn to you and let you.
Yeah, I think at this point, the Dick's Crisis Center is very important due to the opioid problem that we have. And right now, as Jack said, we've got a little mix-up in the Board there, but it is really a very important thing in helping the Sheriff and probably the biggest obstacle we've had is with the hospital this year in that the Dick's Crisis Center has offered that if anybody is put into the hospital, that they'll come up and pick them in a two- or three-year period, a two or three-year, two-hour period. And I believe I spoke to the Sheriff about this and he says he's taken a number of people down there and it is an important thing, it's not, it's not a long-term, but it's a short-term period for these people to get treatment. And it is important that the hospital understand that for every person that we take out of the hospital, within a certain period of time, two to three hours, they don't have to come up with putting those people in rooms for a day or two days, costing them a lot of money. I can't emphasize how important the Dick's Crisis Center is to the Commissioners here and to the general public on helping out in, in this opioid crisis. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, you got any questions for Commissioner Mark, staff, the Sheriff, anyone on this? We have discussed, we did discuss it during budget in detail. I think that at that time, we, we voiced some concerns, but we think it overall is still, it's worth investing in at this time. Okay, so having said that, wants desire of the Board?
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the memorandum of agreement and you see all the different counties, organizations, municipalities that are involved in that. This is for the operation costs and the advisory board membership related to the Dick's Crisis Center. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, I want to ask you again, please call the roll on that.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right, and Jack?
Thank you. I have a couple catch-up things for the Board. Last week, Nan and Amber communicated with you about a required meeting because of our opioid settlement dollars that we'll be receiving. In our memorandum of agreement, which we signed on to in the national settlement, we will need to have a informational meeting on Thursday, June twenty-ninth, from five PM to six PM at the Convention Center. It'll be in Ballroom C. This is a requirement that we invite all our municipalities to come in and share with us what their needs may be and how we can look at these resources and move forward. It is open to the public as required by the agreement. We look forward to hearing from our municipal partners and hope they can attend. I just want to make sure you have it on your calendar so you can be there that day. This is not necessarily a meeting where we're going to invite in all the people who may be a partner in solving the crisis, some of our 501(c)(3) nonprofits, some of our agencies that will be funded through the settlement. This is more particularly for the municipalities in the county, mayors, council managers, clerks, police chiefs, who's ever in that fight with us to understand what tools they need. So if you have any questions, please let me or Amber know, we'll be happy to, to work with you on that. Last week, and I don't want to steal his thunder, which I'm guilty of most of the time, Commissioner Mark and I attended a Highway Seventy meeting in Kinston, got very good information. Seems like the Craven County projects are really on a roll here. We've got a lot of, lot of projects that are going to be hitting full steam within the next year, Commissioner Mark, I believe. But most importantly, and I spoke to the Chairman about this on Friday, about ten years ago, Craven County hosted a transportation summit for eastern North Carolina and it was very, very successful. And by being the lead in this for all of eastern North Carolina, it certainly puts a spotlight here on Craven County and some of the transportation issues that we face. And I'll tell you, whether it's economic development, recruitment, whatever, transportation plays a huge part in how our county grows or it doesn't grow. And I think by bringing in the leaders in the state of North Carolina in our community here, we're going to really benefit from the outcomes. I projected that to be sometime in mid-October. We're partnering with a couple other agencies to do that. Right now, we have tentative approval from the Secretary of Transportation to be here and some other speakers related economic development, transportation, innovation, all these type of things. So we'll host at the Convention Center, we'll have partners in that, but I just wanted to get your calendar, I believe Gene was, October seventeenth was the tentative date. So for your calendar, October seventeenth, it'll be most of the day, starting at nine, ending in the afternoon. We'll hopefully get some sponsorships for lunch and things like that. So, Mr. Chairman, that's what I have, unless there's questions for me.
Questions from the Board. Now, Jack, for the meeting on the twenty-ninth, do we need to recess this meeting or is it just going to be a special call meeting for that?
No, we do not. It's, it'll either, if, if four of you are attending, which right now I don't have RSBPs from everybody, it'll be posted as a special meeting.
A special meeting?
So I just need RSBPs from everybody.
Okay. Good with that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no questions for the County Manager? All right, Commissioners' Report, who'd like to begin today?
I'll start.
Commissioner Mark?
I was at a meeting at Fairfield Harbor Precinct Meeting, which at that time was to discuss some of the things that Leslie mentioned about the increase in prices. I also spoke to the President of the POA at that time and he's informed me that the houses they're selling now are going from three twenty to four hundred thousand dollars. There was a lot of people that were upset about the increases and, and I reminded them about the difference between two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. And it seemed to go over well. We also had Congressman Murphy there, who gave a talk and actually a very good talk. And I thought it was a well-attended meeting, it was probably close to seventy-five to a hundred people there. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we'll go this way, Commissioner Hunt?
I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
From the middle of last weekend and, and up and through the weekend, the African-American community have been celebrating, celebrating Juneteenth and we've had some wonderful activities and had a parade on Saturday and, and we've had storytellers, we've had, and we've had all, all people involved in this.